Good evening. Today is Monday, March 29th, 2021. It is now 5:00 PM in the afternoon. This is the Westwood Select Board for a regularly scheduled meeting pursuant to Governor Baker's March 12th, 2020 order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law, Mass. General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 18, and the Governor's March 23rd, 2020 emergency order imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. The Select Board meeting will be conducted via remote participation by the board. This meeting is being live streamed by the Westwood Media Center and will be available via recording afterwards. We're going to move on to the first order of business, which is the Chair's update. The annual town election will be held on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. This is a change from the originally scheduled date. On March 25th, the Select Board voted to postpone the annual town election from Tuesday, April 27th to Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. This vote was pursuant to the provisions of Chapter 5 of the Acts of 2021, which is an extension of Chapter 45 of the Acts of 2020, Sections 1 and 2. This was mainly due to the fact that the Westwood Public Schools are planning to return in person, learning five days per week next Monday, April 5th, 2021. And the Sheehan School and the Downey Schools and the Masiums are being used for classroom space. I don't know if that's me. Feedback?
I believe that was Michael. I just muted him.
Oh, good. Thank you. So let's not to disrupt established polling locations. It was determined that town would need to seek out alternative plan for the annual town meeting. We wanted to allow that people continue to vote where they would normally vote. So therefore, the date was moved to Wednesday, April 28th. There will be no school for students that day as it was a previously scheduled professional day. So we will proceed with voting in person for the annual town election on Wednesday, April 28th, 2021. We have our town clerk, Dottie Powers, here with us this evening to talk about vote by mail options and early in early voting in person options. Dottie, do you want to describe those?
Dottie, you're still on mute.
Thank you Chairman Hickie and Select Board members for having me here tonight. We do have a few options for voting for this election on the 28th. I also want everybody just to be reminded that the last day for voter registration is Friday, April 16th, and the town clerk's office will have special hours that day from 2:00 to 4:00 and 6:00 to 8:00 PM. However, you can still register to vote online up until 11:59 PM. There are a couple of different options of voting. The first option would be to early vote by mail, and we do have the applications that are out there on our website. You can pick one up in the lobby at the police station. We need to receive those applications in the town clerk's office four days before, by April 22nd at 5:00 PM. If you don't have an application, you can even send us some form of written correspondence requesting a ballot with your signature on it. There is also absentee voting by mail. Now absentee voting by mail is a little bit different. Their deadline again is the same. It's April 22nd by 5:00 PM for you to submit an application or again, any form of written correspondence. Absentee voting qualifications are if you're away from town on election day, you have a disability that keeps you from voting at your polling place, or have a religious belief that prevents you from voting at your polling place on election day. For any elections held through June 30th of this year, the state law clarifies that any person taking precautions related to COVID-19 qualifies for an absentee ballot by reason of physical disability. Absentee voting in person can be done by appointment only. And this again, now this again, if you qualify, and that is good until April 27th, that's Tuesday at 12:00 PM, and you do need an appointment for that. The early voting by mail is no excuse voting. So anybody can apply for an application and a ballot will be sent when they receive, which typically we will receive them three weeks before the election. And then the another alternative is to vote in person. So I feel very fortunate that we were able to do this this year. Normally, we can't on a municipal election date, but because of the Acts of Chapter 5, the Acts of 2021, they are allowing municipalities by a vote of the Select Board, which was taken on March 25th, to vote early. So we will be holding it at the Westwood Police Station in the Gillette Meeting Room, and the hours are going to be as follows for that. Friday, April 23rd, from 2:00 PM until 7:00 PM. Saturday, April 24th, from 9:00 AM until 2:00 PM. And on Sunday, April 25th, from 11:00 AM until 4:00 PM. And then once again, we will have voting on election day, Wednesday, April 28th, and polls will open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. And for those of you that may feel uncomfortable voting on election day, you have those other options. And also, if you do want to vote on election day, you'll be safe. We'll be setting up all COVID-19 protocols to ensure the safety of staff and voters. Thank you. I hope to see everybody voting in one way or another.
Great job, Dottie.
Dottie, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? All right, Dottie, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Lot of work. Okay, so we're joined now with members of the school committee. I see Carol.
Hi, John.
Hi, Carol. Thanks for joining us.
May is here too.
Okay.
Emily was joining us, but she's on another meeting right now. She may not have joined yet, but only I think all questions, right?
Yeah, well, just I'll just tee it up a little bit. I know we've had a lot of discussions about the the precise, perfect date for a meeting in the fall for a review and a vote from town meeting on the school building project. And we've had a lot of discussions at Budget Steering, and I know Chris and Maya and others have spoken. So do you want to just kind of give us the high level? We can go from there. Does that make sense?
Sure. Carol, you want me to take it? Sure. So yep, thanks, John. We were hoping to have a town meeting in the fall to vote on the full cost of the project. As you know, we do have a warrant article this spring where we're requesting, you know, sort of an upfront amount for just design development. But for the big project vote, we were hoping to have that in the fall. We had some conversations with Chris and we had outlined a schedule, I think. And I apologize, I don't have the dates in front of me, but I believe it's October 18th. Thank you. 18th for the special town meeting, followed by the town election, I think, on the 26th.
Correct.
Yep. So and that's sort of what we are proposing. Of course, we'll do whatever the Select Board Committee thinks is best, but those are the dates we had talked about with Chris and for those meetings.
Yeah, so just a little bit more color. I think it's it's a little bit of a challenge because we didn't want to do it too soon after Labor Day. We want people to return, get acclimated, have plenty of time to become educated on the project overall. And we didn't want to go too late into the fall, especially if we have to have the meeting outside. So where we have to have two important dates, both a town meeting and then a vote. This is this was the the date that we landed on. I still think these dates work really well. I think it ensures that everybody's interests are protected. I don't want to be looking at an outside meeting in the cold. I don't want to be getting too close to Veterans Day or Thanksgiving. And so we really thought this was a happy medium in the fall. So that was just a little more color to it. I don't know if anybody has thoughts or concerns.
So John, will we still do a fall town meeting? Or this will be in place of the fall town?
Yeah, it's I think it's unlikely that we're going to do a fall town meeting, Michael. I just don't I don't see anything coming that would require us to get together. And again, if if we have to have the fall town meeting, I just don't know based, I don't think we can assume that we would be able to hold a meeting inside on November 8th. So I just don't see that there's going to be anything that pressing that we can't then hold off till May 2022.
Maybe maybe Chris should also weigh in on that. Chris?
Yes, sure. So as far as the two dates, Mr. Chair, yes. So one of the things that we've been doing for the last two planned annual town meetings, both the one that we did in June and the one we're planning for in May, those two meetings are being planned for outside. Our hope with students returning to school, the Commonwealth reopening, our Plan A would be to have this, if we're going to have a special town meeting in October, to have that indoors. If not, then we would have to then go to Plan B, which would be outdoors, whether that be in October or whether that be in November. But as far as a having both a special town meeting and a fall town meeting, it would be my recommendation to the board to consider the fact that if we do have a special town meeting on October 18th, then we would have a special election on October 26th to hold a fall town meeting two weeks after. Question from some residents, maybe, why didn't you just have everything on the special town meeting? So it would certainly be my plan to have the special town meeting for the school project. That's what we're going to do. However, I can't tell you that I wouldn't have a recommendation to the board if we had a time sensitive matter that we couldn't wait until May to do.
I just, I think, but aside from the dates for a minute, if we just back it up a little bit, this will be the largest expenditure the town meeting in Westwood has ever voted on. This is a generational project. I think it's highly unlikely that we would couple this with other issues. Aside from the date issues and logistic issues, I just really believe this deserves its own meeting. And my my fear is that if, you know, COVID has created such unpredictability, if that's the right word, that I don't want it to be a cold November night and we're asking people to sit outside. And that's potentially what we could be looking at. So we, you know, there was a lot of thought put into these dates.
Mr. Chair, if I may, just to, again, if there was something that was pressing on the, that I felt on behalf of the town, I would certainly share that with the board. And it's certainly in the board's discretion whether or not to push that meeting, push that matter forward or not. But I just wanted to say that at this point in March, I can't guarantee you that there won't be anything that we would have. I don't know if there's going to be something, some change in the state that would require some type of town meeting action. So I just wanted to be clear with the board from my perspective. Certainly do our best to plan so we wouldn't have anything else, but to guarantee that in March, it would be very difficult for me.
But I guess my point is even if something does come up, I still wouldn't agree that we should do it all in one night.
So, so Mr. Chair, then if that if that's the decision of the board, then then we would have to have a fall town meeting if that was indeed the case. Why not a special, excuse me?
Mr. Chairman, you don't have to decide on a fall town meeting until September 15th by charter. You have to decide by September 15th if you're going to have a special town meeting. I mean, a fall town meeting.
Right, but I, my understanding, May, correct me if I'm wrong, is we need some committed dates for the school building authority.
Yeah, I mean, the, you know, we told the MSBA that we would have this all completed by November 30th. So that's sort of the outside date, but you know, the more specific dates we can give them, the better. And I think also for purposes of our planning, if we have dates, it's also ideal for us as opposed to sort of not knowing if it's going to be in October or November. So if we can make a decision, I think it would be better for the project.
I agree.
Yeah, I don't think there's any issue about making a decision for the school building project. I think what what we have is by September 15th, if something comes up that is really pressing, that for some reason is compelling enough to stay with the fall town meeting in November, the special is already going to be held, so it doesn't change the special. But if something really important comes up and collectively the Select Boards agrees that we should have a fall town meeting, then it happens. But if the Select Board says not compelling enough or there's nothing there, by September 15th, you'll vote to say cancel the fall town meeting. And very distinct words, the fall town meeting is by charter and the special town meeting is the request before us tonight. They're two different town meeting approaches in terms of scheduling. One is in the charter, one has to have special action. Nothing changes the request for special action tonight. Even even the sidebar discussion, maybe there'll be something important, maybe there won't be, doesn't change the discussion on the school building project. So we're good on that. We can move forward on that today.
All right. So do we have a motion then to accept these dates?
I move that we vote to accept the request from the school committee this evening for a special town meeting on Monday, October 18th, 2021, and a special town election on Tuesday, October 26th, 2021.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you. I'll call the role, Mrs. Hyde.
Aye.
Mr. Walsh? Mr. Walsh? And I vote aye as well. Thank you, Carol. Thank you, Diane. All your work.
Great. Thank you, guys. We appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Good night.
Okay, thank you. Age to the elderly fiscal year report and Select Board reserve action. Is that Pam? Pam, was that you?
Yes, that's me. So tonight, we are here to give you an update on FY21, Age to the Elderly, and to respectfully ask that the Select Board make a transfer from your reserve account to supplement the funding in that program as you have done for the last few years. I'm just going to share my screen. We did just want to, as we give you the report, just go through again what this fund is and how it helps the seniors in our community. It's a really an important program and really a wonderful program that the town has really excelled at, especially in comparison to other communities in the state. So just real quickly to walk through, Westwood has always been a community that cares deeply about our senior residents. The board knows that. And there's so many ways that the town is always looking out for our seniors. And this program is one that looks directly at the tax bill. It's important to remind people that all municipal taxation rules are controlled by the Department of Revenue. Municipalities cannot create their own tax rules. They can't say, we don't want to, you know, tax a certain group of people or we want to tax a certain neighborhood differently than others. Everything has to come from the state. The state will often offer local acceptance programs that communities can do, like the commercial tax shift or other tax exemption. In 1998, so more than 20 years ago, the state was looking for ways to have communities provide some tax relief for seniors and authorized a local option for the elderly and disabled tax fund. And the state identified the purpose of that to help seniors remain in homes in growing communities, provide real estate tax relief to qualifying low income elderly and disabled residents, allow for donations to be made to a fund, and allow for a payment to be made directly to each recipient's tax bill. Westwood, right away, that program only came out in 1998, and right away in 1999, Westwood adopted that local option. At that time, the town was experiencing growth in our school system. The school enrollment was growing. We were working on several school projects, including the Downey Jones Major Innovation Projects, the new high schools. There was some school impact on the tax. 1999, how does the fund work? There is a committee in place as required by state law. We have a listing here of the various members on the committee. Michael Walsh has been the Select Board's representative for the last couple of years. Pat Ahern has been on the committee since the beginning, I believe. Some of our other finance officials are on it as required by the state, the treasurer, assessor. We also have our Council on Aging Director on there because she is so close with many of the seniors in town. Each year, this committee confidentially considers all the applications that come in from all of our eligible residents. The general guidelines that we have include, but are not limited to, approximately 65 years of age or older, annual income of less than $55,000, and we do verify that with federal income tax returns. And the home must be their primary residence. There are no overhead or administrative costs at all with this fund. We distribute out every year, every penny that we get into the into the account. And really, the goal has been to help long term Westwood residents who wish to remain in the town and the home that they love. How do we find our candidates? Each year, we really try to promote the program and make the application process simple and easy. Applications are available in lots of different ways, at Town Hall or the Council on Aging Building, online on the town's website. We do put an insert in every quarterly tax bill that goes out. And then we do do a separate annual mailing in the fall each year. And those mailings and tax bill inserts talk about how you can contribute to the fund and how you can also apply to the fund. I think what's also important is that we do look for referrals throughout the throughout the town. So as I mentioned, our Council on Aging Department, our Veterans Department, various community groups in town who are helping residents, friends and neighbors. We have a lot of different ways that people are trying to make sure that we get the right candidates to the program. How do we fund the program? The state program originally only allowed for donations to be given to the fund. In 1999, we were able to expand this to allow for town funds to supplement.
Pam, that's the wrong year.
That's the wrong year. I'm sorry. So that was in, I have that coming up. Yep, you're correct. I'll make sure to correct that, Nancy. So our donation sources. Some residents contribute a small amount every time they pay their tax bill. So every quarterly tax bill, they may pay $25 or so. We do that annual appeal letter in the fall. We get various corporate donations. And then other donations, sometimes we get a large individual donation from someone in town. Some of the charitable groups in town might make a donation. Donations can be made online or in mail. We've tried to make that very easy. Our residents want to help our seniors. They know who these neighbors are. And as our town continues to grow and our home values increase, the real estate tax bill does increase, and our residents do recognize the impact this has on their senior neighbors. Our residents are really happy to donate. They often send along notes with their donations. I just wanted to include a couple of those here. Our family would like to support the elderly and disabled in our town. Thank you for the opportunity to make a difference. One of these quotes, this year, we got a very large donation from a relatively new family to town. And I just thought that really was so special that they were taking the time out to learn about the program, make the donation, wanted to support their neighbors. On the funding, so the committee at a certain point looked for ways to increase the amount available to help the seniors. So here's the correct date, Nancy, 2016. Our annual town meeting approved an article at town meeting that was a homeroom petition. It had to be subsequently approved by the state again because it's a taxing and real estate issue. But that allowed town funds to be used for the programs. We could appropriate funds into this account beyond the donations. This allowed for a couple of important things. It allowed us to increase the number of participants and increase the annual award amount that they were getting. So since that was approved, since FY18, the Select Board has authorized an approximate transfer of about $55,000 a year from the reserve account to supplement the donations. The supplement approximately matches the donations. We felt it was important to continue with our donation side and then asking for a supplement to help grow that. So who receives the funding? Our typical recipient is about 87 years old, has lived in Westwood for over 50 years. They're currently in a home valued at about less than $600,000. This bar graph shows the amount we're able to distribute out every year to our recipients. So you can see here in the last couple of years, once we've been able to supplement with town funding, we've really been able to increase what we've been able to do. So we were able to go from about $45,000 or $50,000 a year up to, you know, anywhere from $90,000 to $100,000 a year. Each year, there's about 45 to 55 residents assisted. And since this program was started, that what this bar graph shows, there's been a total of $895,000 distributed directly to the seniors in this community, again, right to their tax bills. So each year, again, about 45 to 55 residents receive assistance. The list does change slightly each year. Every year, we have a few people who move out of town or do pass on. And every year, there's some new residents who become eligible. So the list changes slightly each year. The typical distribution amount for each house from FY10 to 17, it was about $800 to $1,200. FY18 and 19, we had some additional donations that year. We were able to do about $2,500 for each household. And then last year and then this year, we would be doing $1,800 to each household. That payment that goes against the taxes is about 20% to 25% of that home's tax bill. So it really is a significant amount for them for the taxes. Those residents are still eligible for other programs, such as the senior work off, other state senior exemptions that they may be eligible for. So the funds, we get letters all the time from our recipients, and we get tremendous feedback. They, it helps them with their tax bill, but it also really makes them feel recognized and supported by the town. It really makes a difference to them. They're very grateful and they're pleased to be able to stay in their homes. We've got a couple of quotes here that notes we received back, just to pick a couple. Having grown up in this family home and seen how our town has grown around us, I am grateful to continue living here. At one time, it was possible to contribute to the tax relief fund, never realizing someday I'd be a recipient. What a wonderful fund this is for those of us who have benefited from a generous award provided by many resident donors. Westwood, my home for 41 years is a wonderful, caring community. Thank you so much for caring about me. I also have some additional ones on this next page here, but I just have to be honest. We get loads of letters each year. And again, we know from those groups who are out working with these residents that this really is making a difference for them. It helps with the tax bill. It also makes them realize that the town is caring and supportive for these, our most vulnerable senior residents. So this year, the committee would like to distribute $95,000. That will provide an approximate $1,800 payment to 54 recipients. This year, 45 of those recipients are returning from last year, and then we had nine new recipients. So we were pleased with that, again, that we're getting referrals and new people be becoming aware of the program and sending in their application. So the committee would like to request a supplement from the Select Board Reserve account of $55,000. That is again, consistent with what you have done since you've been able to make that supplemental appropriation, FY18, 19, and 20. So again, the committee really does great work in getting the donations, getting the applicants, getting this out. Again, the money goes right directly onto the tax bill, really makes a difference. We know a couple of years ago, when we did some research, when we were putting together to the homeroom petition to allow for supplement, we researched other communities. We know we are doing far more than our other neighboring and like type communities. So I think it really is a hallmark of Westwood to care about its residents, to care about its senior residents. And this program makes a difference for them to get this amount every year, to give out almost $900,000 in the 20 some odd years that this has been in place, really is tremendous and is putting funds back into the community to those who really need it. So that's a little summary of where we've been. And again, the request this year is for the board to transfer from your reserve account $55,000.
Thank you, Pam. Every year when we go through this, I think of the time that you called comparable towns looking for comparables. We still haven't found one.
No, and we won't name names, but towns who, you know, are considered some of the wealthier towns in this state are not doing it to the degree that Westwood is. It's really impressive. It's a tool. There are not a lot of tools that a community has to help with tax bills. This is a tool that helps specifically for our seniors in town with their tax bills, and the town is doing it to a tremendous degree.
Michael, Nancy, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd like to make a suggestion because I think what we're, this is probably the most meaningful thing we do as a community. I mean, we do so much, but this is just phenomenal. And I think it might be nice to have flyers or depending And I think it might be nice to have flyers or depending on what's done at Westwood Day in September, some outreach that can be given out to families who attend regarding this fund. I think there might be an education opportunity. Because it's hard to get the word out on these things. You've talked about all the ways that we were already doing it. But clearly, the donation side from the community is leveled off and we need to increase that. And we need to increase it as much as possible. So I just think that might be an opportunity and we should think of others ways face to face to have people talking about it. We used to have a Town Hall booth at at Westwood Day. And it might be great to feature this and have Lena there, she can be there. And and people from the committee just sharing information and having the quotes up on a board or whatever to connect with people, to have them understand that this is a place that families can donate to, scout troops can donate to. And I don't want to take away from other places where funds go. I'm trying to raise all the ships. This is a place that really deserves and warrants increased donations. So I think it's great.
Okay.
All right, ready?
Ready for a motion?
Okay. I move that we approve the transfer of $55,000 from the Select Board's Reserve Account to supplement the donations collected for FY21 in the Aid to the Elderly and Affirmed Account. And yeah, that's the motion.
This could be my favorite second.
I'll call a roll, Mrs. Hyde?
Absolutely, I.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I as well, okay, thank you all, thanks Pam, thank you Chris.
Very much.
Always a nice one. Okay, so we're going to move on to the 2021 Annual Town Meeting Article Discussion, Potential Vote to Amend to Accept and or Remove Articles. So I think we have in front of us, Pam and Chris, Budget 10, which was intended to establish a special purpose fund for affordable housing. I believe we've kind of come to the conclusion that we have other avenues to achieve the same purpose. So this is redundant at this point, correct?
Yes, Mr. Chair, the recommendation would be from us to remove that article from the warrant list.
Okay, and then miscellaneous four and five, we're just, we're placeholders?
Yes, and we're also recommending to the board to remove those two articles as well.
Okay. Is that it? I believe that's it. Michael, Nancy, anything?
I'm happy to make a motion.
Thank you.
Okay, I move that we remove Budget Article 10, which was framed as an article to establish a special purpose fund for affordable housing. And that we remove Article 4 miscellaneous article and Article 5 miscellaneous article, all from the Annual Town Meeting Article List.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
I vote aye as well.
Mr. Chair?
Sure.
Just with with that vote, just so that the board's aware, it is anticipated after this evening's meeting of the Finance Committee that a warrant book will be put together and ready for publication or ready to go to the printer by Monday, so possibly before your next meeting. One of the questions that we did receive was the the article listing. How would they be listed? If the board is inclined to have a discussion on that, or would you like to hold that until your meeting?
Do you have a recommendation, Chris? We usually don't discuss it at the meeting. It's usually determined by the time.
So the real challenge is, well, what we have is we have a proposed warrant that has the listing of the articles from 1 to 22 now. And one, in Articles 1 through 15, of the Select Board Articles, that includes the FY21 transfers, the operating budget, the capital requests, and also the Select Board Articles, those two Select Board Articles, the street acceptance, and then the Westwood Lodge, the two Westwood Lodge properties. Then we get into the Planning Board Articles and we have the school, the elementary school budget project for the bridge funding. And my recommendation would be to have the Select Board Articles 1 through 15. And then really, the question's going to be, do you want the school article to go before the Planning Board Article? Or do you want the Planning Board Articles to go before the school article?
How many Planning Board Articles are there?
We have three, six.
Six?
Medical uses are.
They broke that into three.
One of those three is the housekeeping article.
Right, you know, I almost feel like, I feel like there's going to be people showing up solely for that, for the school one. So if there's just one, I would get it out of the way before the six.
It's a financial article too.
Yeah, exactly.
And right now, it's listed as Budget Article 13.
I would put it after the financial articles, but before the other Select Board Articles. Because it's all a discussion of money, approving approving a funding request.
So we would move that article to what would be now proposed, it would be warrant article number 14, and then we move all the other articles down?
Yeah.
Okay. So then it would read after the, after Article 12, which is the capital equipment for borrowing, we would have the school article, and then we would go into Select Board Articles, Street Acceptance, and then the two Westwood Lodge, and then we go right into Planning Board Articles.
That makes sense.
Yeah.
And then the last, and then, one of the questions would be, or is, do you want the medical use article, the medical uses to be last or the housekeeping to be last?
I don't, I think the Planning Board should decide the order of their articles. They've been approaching it a certain way, but in terms of town meeting, Nora and Abby may have, you know, a good feel for an appropriate order.
Nora, do you have a suggestion?
I think it might be, make the most sense to do the medical ones first because there are three of them and they can be taken all together. That followed probably by the the gun sales article. And then the one that's a little bit newer is the discussion of the the temporary uses. We do that next and then housekeeping last. That would be my suggestion, but if you want to hear from the Planning Board, they have a meeting coming up next week and they can discuss it then.
I think they're going to need to know, I think it's really a matter, Nora, of you checking in with the chair. And I mean, I don't think we need to be involved in that discussion. And I just think it's an ordering of articles, it's not a big decision.
Yep.
Nora, I think we just, in order to try to meet the FinCom's timeline and what they're trying to do, we're going to need to get something to them by Monday.
Okay, I'll give the chair a call.
Appreciate that, thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Okay, no, thank you. Do we, we have, we have a number of people waiting on the Millbrook Road issue. Do we want to just do future board meeting dates at the end?
Sure, that's fine.
Is that okay? So why don't we move in, why don't we move into Old Business Traffic Rules and Order Amendment Review, Millbrook Road Stop Sign?
Can we get? Mr. Chair?
Yes, who's on for that?
You did, I'm sorry, you had a question in the chat?
Oh, I'm sorry.
From Mr. Atkins, or a comment?
I'm fine with this.
So Nora, do you, do you understand what he's saying?
I think he was saying he was fine with the order I suggested.
Yes.
Oh, okay, fine, thank you.
All right, so we'll put that together, thank you very much Nora, thank you David.
Okay, so I know I saw.
Lieutenant Vincy's with us.
Lieutenant Vincy, thank you for joining us. I know Mr. Buckley is here. Do you want to, Chris, do you want to just tee this up?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So at a previous Select Board meeting, there was a recommendation to put stop signs on the road. And there was some questions from some of the residents. They asked the board, different board members to go out and look at it. A number of us did look at it, the board, myself, the chief, Lieutenant Vincy. And Lieutenant Vincy did some additional research that he would like to share with the board this evening.
Thank you, Chris. So after that last meeting, I had deployed one of our speed signs, which not only tracks speeds of vehicles in the area, but it also will do a vehicle count as as vehicles pass it. So that was up for eight days at the end of January, at the bottom of Millbrook Road, where it kind of meets, just before it meets 109. And the numbers I got, excuse me, I'm just looking at my email here, was an average of about 99 trips per day. So that's round trips in that area. The average speed was 18 miles an hour. The highest was 34 miles an hour. The speed limit in that area is 30. So I showed that data to Chief Silva and we had more discussions about it. And I think, based on the totality of everything with the with the meeting and the neighborhoods wanting to have them removed, I think that data would support them not necessarily being necessary. Because there's other areas in town where there aren't stop signs and it seems to flow fine. And I think that data supports it. And it's one of those things like, as a police department and when I was in charge of traffic, I would always err on the side of caution and say a sign is better than no sign to delineate who has the right of way. So, you know, I still, you know, stand by, you know, the recommendation brought forth to the board. But I also understand the neighborhood's reluctance to have the signs. And again, Chief Silva and I discussed it. And we are, you know, we just wanted to have a further discussion today. And we have no issues with them if the board chooses to be removed.
Thank you for, thank you for all the diligence on that, I really appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Michael and Nancy, anything?
I went out, John, so yes, five, sorry.
Well, I want to thank Lieutenant Vincy. I think doing the data count, traffic counts and speed is, it just corroborates what the neighbors were saying. And I get why you initially had the recommendation you did. It's an interesting neighborhood there. And I don't think the stop signs have a really good location to be effective anyway. There, you have to go past the stop sign to get a line of sight if you were leaving. I kind of describe it as the shape of a P. If you're coming off 109, it's the long stick of the P. And then there's the loop that's around. And if you're on that loop and coming back down Millbrook to go to 109, the stop sign that's there, you have to go past it to look up to your right and make sure no traffic's coming down. And while standing out there, it was clear that that's what cars do and they weren't reckless. It was, I think, a typical situation. So I don't think the stop signs have a location that could be found to even be effective. But then you're finding out they really aren't needed. And I think your recommendation with that further research is something that I think it makes it worthwhile to remove them.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I got it, John, just, I got it, I got a chance to go out and take a look at them as well. So I'm okay with taking them back then. Not afraid to say we made a mistake.
We have our information too. And I, you know, sometimes we just have to do that.
And I think in the future, we need to be really careful about anonymous tips. And make make sure if someone wants something that they put their name to it. So at least we have a name to look at and say, this was requested specifically by a neighbor and we can verify.
Well, and also more the reason why. I think that's the hard part, Joe, about the the way the the concern can be expressed. We'll never really know why that person was expressing it. It could be somebody that was from outside the neighborhood who hadn't experienced, like, gee, I was confused. Yet there should have been a stop sign and took the time to do it, we don't know.
Right, and I think that's to what Mr. Walsh touched on. It was an anonymous post or complaint or what have you. And then that weighed with named residents and people that live in that neighborhood that were, you know, against it. I think that certainly has a significant weight when it comes to determining the, you know, the need for the signs, so.
Yeah. I'm happy to make a motion. I move that the Select Board vote to amend the November 23, 2020 adopted traffic rules and orders, Schedule 3 Isolated Stop Signs Decision to install two stop signs on Millbrook Road and proceed with having the removal of those two stop signs located on Millbrook Road, southbound at the bottom and southbound at the top. Whatever those southbounds mean, but the two signs get removed.
Yeah, I'll second. I know what you mean.
So Mr. Ahern, I was not at the November 23 meeting. So since this is a vote to amend that vote.
Mm-hmm.
Assuming I shouldn't be staying.
Well, you can abstain, but I don't think you're required to abstain. Because this action now comes before you, you, you don't have a conflict, so you're perfectly able to vote on it.
I just thought, John, maybe we should see if anybody from the public wants to stop us from making this motion? And approving it?
I don't see anybody.
It's worth checking.
There is no one. Okay, okay, so I'll call a roll, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I will vote aye as well. Thank you all for all your help. Lieutenant Vincy, thank you for all your diligence on that.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much, have a good night, everybody.
Thank you, Lieutenant, great job.
Bye.
Okay. Where are we? We are on to appointments and reappointments of boards and committees. Tish, you want to help us with that?
We had one, the, from the Audit Committee, Fred Steve submitted a letter of retirement from the Audit Committee in February. So the board would accept his resignation or his retirement this evening and to look to post the open position on the town website. And we had one appointment of Artur Yudzinski for you to consider as an associate member on the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so let's do, let's accept Mr. Steve's resignation and then we can invite this applicant for the other position if he's here.
I don't see Artur on, and I just emailed him and I have not received a response yet.
I think you should wait on that one.
No, I agree.
I'm going to hold off on that one for now.
Yeah, we don't know him, I don't know if either of you guys know him, I don't. I know he's been interviewed, but we usually like having people.
I agree.
He confirmed that he was going to be attending this evening, but I do not see him on.
So I want to say, I think it's interesting that Fred Steve wants to retire, everybody else resigns. So I think we should call it a resignation, even though.
Semantics, I guess, instead of retirement.
I know he did, but you know, it's, I'm retiring too, but not really. Anyway, I move that we accept Fred Steve's resignation from the Audit Committee effective today and post the Audit Committee open position on the town website. And we thank Fred for his service to the community on this committee.
I'll second that.
Thank you, yes, I agree, you thank him for all of his work. I'll call the roll, Mrs. Hyde?
Aye.
Mr. Walsh?
Aye.
And I vote aye as well. Okay, so we are on to meeting minutes.
Do you want to go back to the schedule that we skipped over?
Sure.
I don't care about that, but you skipped over.
So Tish, we're looking for, to get, you need one date in early May?
No, we're looking to potentially add a meeting in April, the end of April. We might have a license. I'm sorry?
Thursday, April 26.
No, 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 29.
29, excuse me. I should let Tish talk, excuse me.
We have one member who'll be away, so we're looking on the April 29 to potentially add a meeting and then not have a meeting prior to Annual Town Meeting on Flahigh Field. It's up to the board.
I mean, I can really do anything. Does anybody have any preference?
So it's, the story, the history of selectmen's meeting before town meeting is we historically met an hour before town meeting in case there was anything that we needed to clear up for town meeting. If you schedule it and you don't need it, you don't have to meet. If you schedule it and you need it, it's handy to have for you. So I would recommend that you schedule one for sometime an hour before town meeting. And. and decide at a later date whether or not you need it.
Okay, so, so I guess we're looking to have a meeting on Thursday, April twenty-ninth at five PM via Zoom, and then a meeting an hour before the start of town meeting on May third?
Yes, there, just to be clear, town meeting begins at four o'clock. Resolutions are proposed to begin at four thirty. My recommendation is you be an hour before the resolution, so you be at three thirty for that.
Three thirty.
Okay, that's perfect.
Sure to be a beautiful spring day.
Yeah.
Like last year, it was perfect.
So I guess, I guess what we need to do, John, though, is schedule one for both May third and May fourth.
That's right.
Oh, correct. Yes, okay.
So anyway, I move we schedule, well, we don't need a motion. We just schedule one for, I agree, April twenty-ninth, and then schedule for May third and May fourth.
Perfect.
I'll second.
We don't need a motion. We never.
Okay. Okay. Okay, so now we're on to regular meeting minutes of February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one, and March eighth, twenty-twenty-one. Any edits?
No.
No. So I move approval of the regular meeting minutes for February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Mrs. Hyde?
I.
Mr. Walsh?
I.
I vote I as well.
And I move we approve the regular meeting minutes for March eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
I'll second.
I'll call the roll. Mrs. Hyde?
I.
Mr. Walsh?
I.
And I vote I as well. And so just some housekeeping. I don't see anybody with any questions in the queue. Our next regular meeting will be next Monday, April fifth at five PM, again via Zoom. This evening at seven o'clock, we will be attending the Westwood Finance and Warrant Commission hearing. And at this time, we will be going into executive session. The Select Board will be going into executive session to discuss two issues. One is pursuant to General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-One, A two, to discuss strategy with respect to contract negotiation with non-union personnel. And the second is pursuant to General Law, Chapter Thirty-A, Section Twenty-two, F and G, to comply with any general law for the review of executive session minutes, both of which would have a detrimental effect on the position of the governing body if discussion were in open session. We will not be returning to open session. We will, however, be attending the Finance and Warrant Commission at seven PM.
Okay, I move we go into executive session for the aforementioned reasons.
I'll second.
Okay, I'll call the roll. Mrs. Hyde?
I.
Mr. Walsh?
I.
And I vote I as well. So that concludes this meeting. Have a good night.